2020 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you will stand with us, please. Longtime Chairman and Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our prayers. Craig.
You bow with him, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for the blessings and the opportunities that you've given us today and we pray that we use them wisely, Heavenly Father, and use them for your honor and your glory. We pray, Heavenly Father, especially now that it's on our hearts heavy of our country, we pray that you be with our country and the pandemic that's going on, we pray, Heavenly Father, that some way we'll put it in your hands and we can have a swift answer to this and lives may be spared. It's just, it's, uh, it's what we don't know how to handle it, Heavenly Father, so we just give that to you and we pray that you'll take control of that. Pray that you'll be with us here in our meeting tonight, be with our decisions that we make and we just thank you for giving us this honor to serve our county and we pray that you'd just be with us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. Face the flag, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. This meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission is being conducted electronically pursuant to Governor Bill Lee's Executive Order Number 16. I would ask for a motion that conducting the meeting electronically is necessary to protect public health, safety, and welfare in light of the coronavirus.
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This roll call will also double as our attendance roll call, too. Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gal. At this time, we need to approve the minutes of our June 22 meeting. I'll call on our Vice Chair Pettis Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I have read those minutes. I find them to be accurate and exactly what we did for that meeting right there. I make a motion for their approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve our June 22 meeting minutes. Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll get a second on that, Gal.
Uh, Marvin Whitworth.
We have no items withdrawn or deferred, so we have two items that are scheduled for rezoning tonight. Item 6A, I guess it's 6AA, item number is REZ 20-022 Javier Olivera. Location is 8820 Shelbyville Pike. Commission District is 8. The County Commissioner is Pettis Reed. Site of the site is approximately five acres. Tax map is 179. Existing zoning is RL for residential low density. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial general. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I hope everybody's doing well tonight. Just a quick point of clarification. I think that on the agenda there, that should be commercial services. I apologize. The staff report is correct. I think I just was doing a little copying and pasting and forgot to change that, so just to make that note. The property, as you stated, is located along Shelbyville Pike. They'd like to rezon the property in order to build a construction office and equipment storage yard. This would fall under the construction, sales, and services classification, which is allowed by right in the commercial services zone. A concept plan has been included with your package and someone sounds like they're not muting their mic. A concept plan, again, has been included with your agenda materials. This is not a planned development, so the applicant is not bound to the concept plan, but it should give the Planning Commission ideas to where the applicant is intending as far as his development intentions. The property does have access to Shelbyville Pike. It will continue to have that as well. You can see from the map on the screen before you, the property is immediately adjacent to commercially zoned property. It's also across the street from some other commercially zoned property. Should this application be approved, an engineered site plan would have to be brought in. Of course, that would have to show all county standards being followed as far as parking, maneuvering areas, whatnot. Same with screening. If this were to be rezoned, they would be required to install a type 2 buffer adjacent to any residentially zoned property. Of course, that would mean to the north, they wouldn't have to do anything because that's own commercial already, but the remaining property lines would be required to be screened with the exception, of course, of the front, which those, the fronts are not required to be screened in any commercial district. Again, that would be verified through a landscape plan with the site plan submittal and our performance standards would also apply. As I stated a moment ago, there are commercially zoned tracks both north and east of this property. The property is located along an urban-style corridor, which is what Shelbyville Pike has been identified as under the comprehensive plan. We do anticipate non-residential development in that, both the, with the urban-style corridor. We do feel this is an appropriate request and it is consistent with the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff at this time? Is the applicant here?
I'm online, Chairman Phillips.
Very good. Would you like to make a statement or a presentation?
Really not much. As far as the use that Doug had mentioned, the owner is sensitive to, basically, there's a storage component to this particular request as far as equipment, so he wants to put that behind the building that he would be constructing with parking out front. So as far as being sensitive to the overall aesthetic of Shelbyville Pike, I think he's sensitive to the fact that, you know, we want to make sure we make it as conducive aesthetically along that corridor as possible, so he was very respectful of putting what he considered the more unsightly component of his business behind the actual structure itself and then he, you know, currently, he just is thinking he's probably going to disturb about an acre of the site, of a five-acre site. Again, that may grow, but that's what he had a straw at this point.
Thank you, Clyde. Anyone have any questions? Okay, hang tight, okay?
Sure, Chairman, thank you.
At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number REZ 20-022 for Javier Olivera. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward or recognize yourself online. Seeing or hearing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Chairman Phillips, just to comment, I had to chuckle a little bit about the remark the engineer made about the, to match the aesthetics of Shelbyville, Shelbyville, Shelbyville Pike there. You know, I'm not really sure what the aesthetics are on that corridor. To me, they're not very good. So, you know, I'm concerned, it seems like every month we have something on Shelbyville Pike now in that long stretch and it always seems to be some kind of a rough commercial, a lot of vehicular or materials outside visible. This is just a comment. I mean, I'm for the, I'm for the approval, but have we, is the, is the camel's head already under the tent here or going forward, can we, can we do something a little more restrictive in terms of beautifying, let's say, some of these rough, what I'll call a rough-looking, commercial development? I hate to just give it up and have it turn into an Antioch or Laverne to Antioch stretch, but it sure looks like that's the way it's heading.
Well, I mean, I guess to answer your question, I mean, as you're all aware, the county doesn't have any kind of design criteria or anything like that as far as materials, building materials, anything like that. The state law doesn't allow counties to have a architectural review committee like the municipalities do. There is, the way the law is written, there is one county that fit into the population. I don't remember which one it is, but it's not us. I mean, something, to do something on those lines, I think, would require some sort of a change to the state law in order to allow the county to have something like that, but...
Well, you know, this goes back to a conversation that I've had and Ms. Allen has had in regards to trying to protect 840 from Williamson into Rutherford and not have it turn into something like this. Doug, perhaps, is this a conversation we need to have with the mayor and see if he has any political clout?
Well, actually, it's already been something that's been mentioned to us. I mean, fairly recently, within, I'd say, the last few weeks.
Okay.
That's been brought up, so we've kind of started the conversation at this point.
All right.
So now where that's going to go exactly, I don't know, but again, just the research that we've done, at least at this point, looking at the state law, there's got to be some sort of a change that's going to have to be made.
All right, so we would need legislation changed before we could really do anything.
Correct.
All right. Thank you for that, for letting me make that comment and thank you for some clarification. I'm going to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. I talked to Mr. Rivera and I think he'll, I think he'll do a good job with it and, and if you look, if he does not take out a lot of foliage, he's buffered pretty good already.
Right, and he can, you're absolutely right. He's, yeah, if he doesn't clear the site, he just takes what he needs, he can use a lot of that existing material for a landscape buffer, so he may not have to do much of any supplementing if he keeps a lot of that.
Mike, I asked the same question. How many car lots can we have on 230?
Yeah, and just...
Like looking from Laverne.
Right.
You're talking about Ms. Allen, from Laverne to Murfreesboro, you can walk from car lot to car lot.
And just so you understand, yeah, this is not going to be a car sales lot because it's not, right, just so you understand, okay, because this is not commercial general, commercial services, so it couldn't be that anyway.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment.
Yes, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. And I guess Doug, this is kind of a comment slash question for you and it goes back to the conversation that we've been having for a while about updating the comprehensive plan and we talked about trying to create some kind of an overlay districts for areas like Manchester Pike. That's been specifically one of the areas I've been concerned about in developing in a non-aesthetic way that dishonors the heritage of that particular road. And so I guess my question for you, Doug, is are we not allowed to do some kind of an overlay district as part of our comprehensive plan, not necessarily a design review, that would not require legislative changes?
You can do overlay districts, yes. Now, depending on what you're putting in the overlay district, I think that's kind of the key. I mean, honestly, that's not even something that would have to necessarily wait for a comprehensive plan update. That's something that we could look at. I mean, I guess a lot of it depends on what exactly it is. If you're not looking so much at building material, but if you're looking at maybe larger setbacks, more landscaping, things like that, those are things that aren't design, you know, quote-unquote, "design-oriented." They're not talking about building materials, anything like that, so in that situation, I think, I mean, the county has that authority. We can, we can come up with like overlay zones along corridors and things like that. It is something that we could look at and not have to have any kind of a change to the, to the state law for something like that.
I think that's a much more immediate fix for us and I think it's something we definitely need to pursue and continue to have some serious conversations about before, you know, like Mike says, before this land just gets away from us and we're not able to do it at all.
Right.
Doug, could the, could the overlay process perhaps be a continuing education class for us?
Yes, sir.
And maybe, maybe we use Manchester Pike as a working example?
Sure. Yeah, let's, let me see what I can find. There's some people that might be able to help with that. I mean, I know what an overlay is and how they work, but getting somebody in here that might, has worked on like corridor beautification, things like that, might be, might be a good option.
Well, I remember when we did the, when we did the comprehensive plan, one of the things that we talked about, and I think maybe one or two communities had done this, but we've not finished it across the board, was that we had some of these smaller communities who had already designed sort of, you know, that, that character preservation plan for their area. And so that may be part of this, so that those communities are able to have some say-so about what, what gets preserved and, you know, what, what areas need to be protected. So I don't remember exactly, Doug, you might remember, I don't remember exactly which communities had already done that, but I was thinking two of our smaller, more historic communities had done that already in the county.
Right, well, back, I mean, long, I say long, several years ago, I won't date myself, but when I first started working for the county, the county had completed a, kind of like a small area plan for the Christiana area and one for the North area, but when we did the comprehensive plan, which kind of encompassed everything, I mean, we looked at that possibility for a lot of the smaller communities, like the Rockveils and the Christianas and the Milton's, Last Casses, you name it, where they had like little town centers, so to speak, the rural centers, that's kind of where we came up with that idea to do something on those lines for those communities. Really, it's just been more of a matter of time and resources to try to accomplish something like that with, with the current staffing we have. So, I mean, if that's the direction that the Planning Commission, you know, likes to, would like to go, I mean, we're all for that. With our current workload, it's just going to be challenging, so I'll just leave it at that.
Well, I remember that that was kind of one of those to-do items that we were going to, you know, kind of circle back around to and, and I completely understand, you know, the level of your staffing and the challenges that you guys have there. I'm just curious if there's not some way, if we are going to be updating our comprehensive plan this year, is there some way to work that, sort of fold that into the process since we're already doing it again?
Right, and I think, to a certain extent, I don't think we'll be able to come up with any, you know, specific plans for any of those areas because the, you know, the comprehensive plan is more broad as opposed to the small area plans, which are more specific, but I think you could probably come up with some, you know, general principles, if nothing else, you know, that would fit, you know, region-wide, if you will. So I think that's definitely something to talk about.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
You're welcome. Thank you. Commissioner Reed?
Chairman, I feel like I might want to say something there, too, due to the fact that my name is listed there as the Commissioner that is in that district, but I'm the, when you're looking at the picture we're looking at right here as Highway US 231, I'm the Commissioner on that side. On the other side is another Commissioner. But when you look at those properties that are located on that highway, which happens to be a four-lane highway that goes from Murfreesboro to Shelbyville, and that highway is a 65 mile per hour highway, which is, if you get out there, 65 is hard to find because you better be experienced in NASCAR when you get out there. I'm just telling you that because we have seen in those crossovers right there, a lot of different accidents and what we're dealing with out there. The property you're also looking at, and you can see it right there, the property, the reason you're seeing these building sites out there is due to the price of that property. You're also looking at the type of property that it is. It's not where you would build a, a major home or anything of that type, and if you'll look right quick, you'll see no open fields and there's no major agriculture that's seen right there. That is primarily wooded, a rocky area, which it's working very well for these commercial sites is what's happening there, and that's why this has happened. And once you have one place there and the second one placed there, it becomes, as we see here this evening, you, it's already there, it's already happening. And I like the idea of looking to the fact that, you know, what can we do to make this in a way that we can make those sites a little more, I guess, eye appeal or whatever as you go down that road. I think that is true, that we need to see what we can do with that, because this is a section of the road that we're seeing more and more of this and it just gets to the, when you see one, you'll get a, you'll get another. There are individuals that are trying to come there, that are trying to make some of this happen, but yet you do have more and more of that and I totally agree that if we can get to a point where we can work in some way that we can put a little more effort into it, where we can make these type of facilities more appealing, I'm all for it.
Good. Any other questions or comments? At this point, we have a motion and a second to approve REZ 20-022 for Javier Olivera. Other questions or comments? Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P.
Yes.
Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch.
Yes.
David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater.
Yes.
Lee Bogel.
Yes.
Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Yes.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Doug, can you kind of summarize what we've decided we're going to do as far as overlays or...
Well, I mean, I think at this point, I mean, it seems pretty clear to me, just from the conversation we had, that this is a direction that the Planning Commission would like to start going in, so we'll start doing, putting together some research and also, you know, trying to identify someone that could come and do a session, like a training session kind of thing.
Everything.
For everybody. That's, that's kind of what I've, what I've heard.
Okay. Everybody on the same page there? Mike? Pettis? Item 6AB REZ 20-023 for Ernest Burgess. Location is 7097 Franklin Road. Commission District is 20. County Commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately 576 acres. Tax map is 100. The parcels are 1.00 and 1.02. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is a PUD, Planned Unit Development, for an age-restricted residential community. Doug?
Yes, sir, thank you. As you stated, this property is located along Franklin Road. The applicant is proposing to develop an age-restricted community called Harmony. This would be a 55 and up community. I won't get into a whole lot of the particulars with the subdivision itself as far as the pattern book is concerned. The applicant's going to be making a presentation here briefly, so I want to leave something for him to talk about, I guess, before he gets, before he gets up here. They are proposing this to be a private road subdivision. All the streets would be private, they would not be public. Sidewalks proposed on both sides of the street. They would have things like monotony codes, color restrictions and things like that. Again, I'll let the applicant get into that. The pattern book is also included on your iPads as an attachment, so if you'd like to look at that, we also will have it on the big screen and I do have a hard copy here if anybody wants to take a look at it. We've been meeting with the applicant on and off for the last several months about this project and, and Mike may want to speak more to this, but we stress the importance of stormwater management for this project. The water that leaves this property, of course, flows to the north under Franklin Road to the city of Murfreesboro property directly across the street, generally then to the northeast, at least a portion, a good portion of it through the Royal Glen subdivision. The applicant, and again, they'll present about this, has set aside a total of approximately 31 acres for stormwater detention ponds to slow the rate of runoff from this property along with an additional 33 acres of delineated wetlands, which have been incorporated into the overall drainage and amenity plan for this development. These totals may change slightly when the more detailed plans are done, of course, but that's typical for any development that we are looking at. The applicant's also proposing approximately two-acre dedication of property along Franklin Road to Rutherford County for use as a fire slash EMS station or other public use. There's no immediate plans for the station to be built, but the area of the county has been identified as an area which could identify, could benefit, excuse me, from an additional station. Along with the main portion of the subdivision, there's a smaller portion, about 17 lots, that's being kept separate from the main subdivision, although it's part of the overall planned development. This is part of the existing Burgess Homestead and this will be developed along a public street at a future time and Mike's highlighting that area there on the, on the plan. Again, additional information can be found in the pattern book and again, the applicant is going to be making a, a presentation here briefly. The development proposes two separate access points to Franklin Road. We have received the traffic study for this, which recommends turn lanes at both entrance points. Since Franklin Road is a state road, these improvements would have to be approved by TDOT. There's also three additional stubouts to adjacent property for future connectivity. Of course, subdivision plaits, both preliminary and final and construction drawings would be required should this application be approved. There's also a large, there's a large amenity area that's proposed as part of this development. The engineer for the project would have to submit a site plan for that and which had to be reviewed by staff and Planning Commission approval as well. Residential plan development, speaking of amenities and screening, are not required to provide buffering adjacent to residentially zoned properties. Residential PDs are required, however, to have a minimum 10% open space with half of that being usable as defined in our zoning ordinance. The proposed development is proposing approximately 137 acres of open space with things like a clubhouse with a pool, tennis, pickleball courts, walking trails, again, preserving those delineated wetlands, among others. Again, the pattern book does have a more detailed breakdown of that on your iPads and since this is a residential development, the performance standards would not apply. The applicant has spent a considerable amount of time creating this plan. Again, I've stated at the beginning, but I'll state it again, we've had multiple meetings with the applicant's design team prior to the official submittal. I will say that this is probably one of the more, if not the most thorough, plan development application book that we've received with the amount of work that the applicant's done prior to submittal. So with that, and also this will be the first age-restricted development in the unincorporated area, at least that I'm aware of, should this be approved and also the largest subdivision should this be approved, that I've been involved with since I've been in the county. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mike, I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to add further to that.
Mike, anything to add at this time?
Oh, just to echo what Doug said, we, we told them early on, this is going to be a challenging piece of property. It's a beautiful piece of property, but there are several concerns that we made clear to the development team and they will present what they have come up with, but all in all, we are happy with what they've presented so far and...
Very good.
Just like to hear from them.
Questions for staff before the applicant's presentation? Anyone? Okay, before we get into our public hearing, would the applicant's representative please come forward? I believe Mr. Charles? If you would please state your name and...
If you guys don't mind, I'm going to remove my mask here. I don't know if that's politically correct thing to do, but we're good? Okay, good. My name is Bill Charles and our company is Free Whole Communities. Planning Commissioners and Chairman, thank you guys for allowing us to present this project to you this evening. Before I get started, I'd wanted to kind of introduce our team that we've assembled to help us through the design and engineering of this project. What Mike Hughes said a few minutes ago is, early on in this process, Mike and Doug Demossi both iterated to us the concerns about this project and the concern was, was related to the drainage in the area. So before we even get started on this project, there's quite a bit of a drainage issue that rolls off of this area and goes through a development called Royal Glen. That's an existing condition that's out there. So as we went through that process, the first thing that we decided to do is assemble a really good team of people that could kind of help us through that process. So our team that we've, we've assembled includes Kemley Horn, who is our traffic engineer, so we're using Brad Wolschmidt. He'll be speaking in a second to talk about the traffic study that we prepared and, and this, specific to this project. Kemley Horn has been around in Nashville for over 50 years and Brad Wolschmidt has been working with developers in cities and other municipalities on traffic studies, has done over 100 of them over the last 15 years. We also, this is a little bit of a unique situation where we're the developers, but we, early on, decided to partner with a building company, so we are partnering with Dell Web, which is, they, Dell Web is going to speak in a second, but they specialize in retirement communities. In fact, around the country, they're notable for being the largest and most sophisticated when it comes to creating retirement communities. The divisional president for Dell Web, his name is Will Coles, he'll come on in a second just to kind of explain what a Dell Web community is. Will and I have been friends for many years. He comes with a lot of experience in home building. He's a native to Nashville, has been here for a very long time and he's been in the home building business for over 20 years and quite frankly, it's a pleasure of ours as the development team to be able to partner with such a great company like Dell Web and with Mr. Coles. We also have, when we started dealing with the drainage concerns that we're working through Royal Glen, we, we connected with a biologist to help us with our permitting process and help us understand some of the things, the nuances of what we might be able to do in regards to dealing with some of the, the drainage issues that come off of our property. So we've hired a company called BDY and BDY has been in Nashville for over 20 years. They also have done a lot of consulting with municipalities and county governments and others, as well as private developers. Chris Fleming is the person at BDY that is the biologist that's working for us. We've been... biologist that's working for us. We've been working with Chris Fleming on projects for many, many years, and I also consider him to be a very close friend. I trust him implicitly. Kind of give an idea about Chris Fleming. He, he has his master's in botany, which I don't even know what that means. It means that he knows how to spell a lot of Latin words on all the different flowers, and God bless him for being able to figure out how to do that. He also does a guide trip through the Smoky Mountains, so he's part of the Smoky Mountain Wildflower Pilgrimage. He does that kind of on the side. He also has just co-authored a book on the plants for Tennessee. So again, just has a real heart for, for this work. Our civil engineer that we selected to help us on this is Thomas and Hutton. And the reason why I picked Thomas and Hutton for a couple of reasons. One is, I mean, they have a 75-year history as an engineering firm. They have a great reputation. They're all over the southeast. They're primarily in Savannah and Charleston is kind of their, where they were founded. But Thomas and Hutton specializes in Dell Webb communities. So a lot of the southwest or southeast communities have been designed and engineered, it was through Thomas and Hutton. They also have a local office here in Nashville, and they also have one here in Rutherford County. Travis Todd is the senior engineer for our project. He's also the one that manages the Nashville office for Thomas and Hutton. And having worked with a lot of engineers, I consider Travis to be one of the best that I've had the opportunity, pleasure to working with. He's a local Nashvillian, and he graduated from Vandy with his engineering degree, Mike, yeah, which I hold that against him a little bit. But our, that, our, I guess I should talk a little bit about Freehold. Freehold, what we do is we do master plan communities, and we do these around the country. So we typically don't do small projects. Most of our, our projects are in that 1,000 to 2,000 lot range, but it's a different type of development. So there's a major difference between doing a small, regular, 200 or 300 lot subdivision and, and kind of the projects that we put together. There's always a lifestyle component. There's more theming. There's just a lot more energy and marketing that goes into projects that we create. But that's what we do. So we do large master plan communities primarily. I've lived in Nashville since 1978, and so I've been doing land development in the Nashville area for just around 25 years. So that's the team. I was going to let each one kind of talk to their specific point, but if I could talk a little bit about the, the development plan, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to turn around, if you guys don't mind, and learn how to use a brand-new laser pointer. See if I can figure out how it works. Perfect. Actually, you know what? Before I get started, Will Coles, are you on the Zoom call by chance?
Yes.
So Will Coles is the divisional president for Dell Webb Communities.
Thanks, Bill. I appreciate the opportunity to share our project with you tonight, and thank you for your consideration. Bill mentioned Dell Webb. We're the nation's leader in providing active adult communities, and we certainly build amazing houses that have been through a lot of consumer validation based on feedback from our customers. We build resort-style amenities, and we put a lot of care and thought into the types of communities that we develop. But what we're really offering is much more than that. It's really a lifestyle and a place to belong for our residents.
Will, can you speak up, please? It's hard to hear you.
Um, yes. Um, we offer a lifestyle, a sense of belonging for our residents. We'll have a full-time lifestyle director present in the community that will manage over 100 clubs. Everything from the pickleball club, the tennis club, a golf club, to theater, arts, veterans' club, model trains, literally anything you could think about, our residents will come together and really live their life and participate with each other. And while they're doing all that within our community that we've designed for them, what they're not doing is commuting outside of the community to and from work at typical business hours. The site is age-restricted, so they're not putting kids in the schools like a typical subdivision would. But what they will do is volunteer endlessly, and they'll put time and energy into the schools in any way they can think about to make a positive impact. They'll be active in the churches. They'll drop anchor organizations. And our residents are, just bring so much experience and character to our subdivisions. It's really, it's really about them and, and the impact that they can have on, on our community, but the surrounding area as well. Our homes will range from about 400,000 to over 650,000 for 1,600 to 2,600 square feet. And we've done an extensive study on the entire Nashville market and surrounding areas, and we believe that this location with proximity to the city of Murfreesboro is, and all the conveniences that that comes with, is a, is a great spot to put a Dell Webb community. I think that'll be really successful. And I appreciate, again, you taking the time to hear our project, and I'll stay around if any questions come up. And our, the rest of our team will share a lot more details about the site.
Thanks, Will. If anybody had questions about some of the comments that he made, I, I might be able to address a couple of them if you weren't able to hear. Will, where in the world did you get that shirt from, man?
I don't know.
Next time we prepare for a presentation, let's talk first. So Will Coles, again, is the divisional president for the Dell Webb community. When we, if we could flip Doug to the land plan. So again, one of the comments that Mike Hughes made earlier tonight was about some of the challenges that we faced. So if you guys don't mind, I'd like to point out those challenges and then talk about some of the things that we've tried to accommodate with some of those challenges. Let me try to do this from the side here. So when we first developed the site plan, and, and guys, this is probably the 10th or 15th iteration of this land plan, unfortunately. As we went through the design, we actually started first with the, the comment that Mike Hughes made about the drainage issue. So if I could start with that concern, when, when we looked at the property, the first thing that we had to figure out was do a model, a drainage model that kind of, where the water leaves our site and goes underneath Highway 96 and runs through the city of Murfreesboro's 152 acres here, and then collects and goes on into, into Royal Glen. When we, and I'm going to let our engineer speak more specifically to the drainage and some of the calculations and how we got there. I'm going to be a little bit more 50,000 foot on it. But as we designed it, we, we wanted to make sure that we had all the, we could detain as much of that water as we could and hold it longer on the site. So we actually created about 32 acres of detention ponds. Every one of those areas that's highlighted in blue is a detention pond that has been oversized intentionally to detain, to detain more of the, the storm water. The, the other thing that we created in the land plan, or some of the other concerns we had, was about traffic. And so turning this into a Dell Webb community was very intentional. Retirees have a tendency not to, to leave in peak hours or come back during peak hours. Most of these people are retired. This is going to be a 55 years and older community. There are caveats to that and how people of younger age can live within the community, but all those prescriptions and how that works for Dell Webb nationally will be put together in our CCNRs. But typically, it's going to be a lot less, less traffic. I'm going to have our traffic engineer at the end of this thing. He'll kind of explain the traffic study. The, the other thing that we wanted to do is, because this is an onsite sewer system that we'll be working with CUD on, we decided to take and push majority of the entire development, which is this area right here, push it back about 1,100 feet. So off of Highway 96, there's going to be mostly the same feel that you currently see that's out there. Where we don't have that is up there at the very front. In this front area in the, the top corner, we're actually going to be putting in some landscape buffer. That's going to be probably similar to what you see at Royal Glen as you drive down there, how they planted some evergreens. The, so about 1,100 feet setback for, for this area. When you get to the amenity center, you'll notice that in the design guidelines or the, the vision book that we've given to everyone, that Dell Webb plans to put in a 25,000 square foot heated amenity center. Reason why I say that or emphasize that is, that's part of the, the intriguing thing about a Dell Webb community. It's all about lifestyle. So they, they really promote walking trails and a large amenity center. They have two Dell Webbs currently in Nashville. They have one, it's in Mount Juliet that was built years ago, called Providence. Providence has a, a very similar-sized amenity center there. They have another Dell Webb that's in Spring Hill right now that's finishing up, and in that development or that amenity center, they have an indoor swimming pool. So they have a lot of amenities that drive up the lifestyle. One of the things that we're also programming in this project, other than just the, the 25,000 square feet of amenity center, there's another 8,000 square feet of unheated space. That would be like pavilions and porches and things of that sort on top of the 25,000. They also were, were putting in 3.2 miles of walking trails. This is a little hard for me to describe, but 3.2 miles in walking trails, but on top of that, we also have some primary collector roads, some boulevard-type collector roads that will be designed in the project. And that's going to be primarily the, the entrance coming in and kind of bringing its way into the community as kind of like fingers into the community to help direct traffic. On some of those same collector roads, we also have some of our sidewalks as 10 feet wide. We have some that are actually eight feet wide. So on top of the 3.2 acres, there's additional larger-type sidewalks that'll be installed as well. The, the other thing I was going to mention, when we first started this project, the property owner, Mr. Burgess, brought to our attention that there was a need for the possibility of a fire hall and an EMS center. And he was describing years back on how they had, were trying to work on ISO ratings and, and how to try to ramp up more, or faster response times. Well, it wasn't, it's kind of funny. Shortly after that, we met with our commissioner, our county commissioner for this location, Trey Gooch, and that was actually one of the first thing that he also asked us for, was to look for a possible EMS fire hall location. So having done this already in Nashville before, in fact, just within the last year or two, we've did this for another fire department here in Nashville, we are proposing to dedicate approximately two acres right there off of Highway 96. We've already met with the, the fire chief and the gentleman over EMS and the fire department, and have presented the concept to them. So the way we left that meeting is that, yes, they would like us to make that dedication. Excuse me. The, we also talked, you know, kind of thinking through some of the, the obstacles that we've had to overcome. Traffic is, we talked about that a second ago, but our traffic engineer is also going to describe that we're going to be putting in turn lanes that come in and out of the project off of Highway 96. Now, to Mike Hughes's point, we also have to work with the county and the state to be able to make sure that we can get those turn lanes in, in and out of the community. But that is one of the commitments that we're making as part of this project. The, the other thing I was going to mention, it's very uncommon for a retirement community to load children into the school system. So knowing that the county has a lot of children in the schools now in this particular area, and I know there's plans for looking for new school sites, but one of the reasons for going to a Dell Webb community was because of the, of the, in the size of this community, not trying to overburden the schools. So again, it's very uncommon for a retirement community to load up schools. I, I can explain that to everyone later after this presentation, if you'd like me to. It's usually I get more laughs out of that one. Our density for this project is designed for two units per acre. So we fall certainly within, I believe in, within the county's vision for this area. The amenity center area, as I'd mentioned before, is about 25,000 square foot amenity center. The area in which it sits on is, it looks probably smaller than it is, but that's actually sitting on 11 acres. Doug Demossi mentioned a second ago that we have a variety code, or a monotony code, it's called by several different things. What we've prescribed in our design guidelines as a part of our commitment is to not reduplicate the same elevation of house side by side, or for that matter, the same color of house side by side. So we have in the design guidelines this gap between houses to make sure that as you're driving down the street, you actually still have that great-looking streetscape. One of the, last thing I was going to mention was the the wetlands. We, in the state of Tennessee, it's kind of evolved over the last several years where you go back and forth with how the Army Corps of Engineers and the State of Tennessee, TDEC, Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, permit developments. Well, with our particular drainage issues, not only were we deciding to put in 32 acres of detention ponds, 31 acres of detention ponds, but we also have designed wetlands. And these wetlands were intended to be restored on-site. So one of the things that we did when we, we looked at with our biologist is that a large portion of this area in green, if you can see that, in this linear wetland here, all this area, and this area, and this area are areas that we would take and turn back into wetlands. It's, in my, in my experience, my personal experience, it is very uncommon for TDEC and the Army Corps of Engineers to allow developers to go in there and mitigate and restore wetlands on their own property. Typically, they want you to buy in and pay in credits, and then they'll take that money and then they'll allocate it on projects elsewhere. Situation here is unique, that we actually had a wonderful piece of property in which to do this on. So we actually reached out to the, the director of the Army Corps of Engineers here locally, Tim Waller, and, and the EPA, who came in from out of Atlanta, and we walked the site with them. And they actually gave us, I don't know what we did to talk them into this, but they have allowed us to actually do this on-site. And so one of the things you'll find in the pattern book is that we're actually taking about 27 acres, and we're taking it from what you see out there today is just farm field and maybe open like a farmer swale to drain the water, which is the same swale that, that leads to Royal Glen. And the state and the corps are being petitioned to allow us to do mitigation on, or remediation on-site. That would be 27 acres of, of regrading, planting. One of the problems that we have with drainage right now is that the land is compacted. Over 100 years of cows trampling the ground, it's really turned it into almost like concrete. It's just really hard and it doesn't absorb water. With this 27 acres of, of mitigation, this will open up and allow for water to, to seep into the, the groundwater better. What I'd like to do now is turn this over to Travis. Travis, again, is our civil engineer. He's the one that I've asked to be specific about helping us early on design a solution the best that we can. It's not an end-all solution, but the best that we could find on how to solve some of the drainage issues that lead from our project into Royal Glen. Travis, would you mind coming up and speaking to that, please? And while he's coming up, I just wanted to point out that one of the things that we worked on, Travis, come on up. One of the things that we worked on early on is, instead of a typical subdivision where you come before a board as yourself and ask for permission to develop a subdivision of this, of this type, usually we just create a land plan and we submit it to you guys. That's not what we've done here. When we met with Doug and with Mike Hughes on numerous occasions, and we talked about the drainage issue, the, that became the primary focus. So before we even submitted it to you guys here today, Travis and his team actually did an entire grading plan for the, for the whole site, for all 500-plus acres. And what that did is that grading plan allowed him to calculate much more definitively what type of drainage issues this site would cause and how to retain it. So when I said that we came up with 31, 32 acres of detention area, it wasn't a random number that we came up with. It was actually a, an engineer plan that likely will change, grant you that, as we go through the more higher level of detail as we get into it. But that really took it to a whole nother level that typically we don't do at, at this stage of, of a project. Travis, that's the...
Thank you. Thank you for your time tonight. Allow us to come present the project. Thank you for your time tonight, allowing us to present the project to you. I want to thank Doug and Mike and the rest of the staff that we've had the pleasure of meeting with over the last several months of working on this project together with their input as we've gone. Doug, if you wouldn't mind flipping over to the topography slide, or Mike? Right there, that'll work. So this, what you see on the screen here is the outline of the 570 or so acres that comprise the project. The blue areas represent the drainage patterns today. We've gone about as far on this project in terms of preliminary engineering as we've ever done, in terms of the level of detail we've gotten into at this point in the process. We knew we had to start with the existing conditions and the concerns of the existing residents in mind, and then work from there. As most of you know, the drainage from the site flows north under Highway 96 and then on toward Royal Glen. And we've met with the neighbors in Royal Glen. We've had multiple community meetings. We've sat under trees and at the barn on Mr. Burgess's property and allowed neighbors to come and express their concerns and hear them and show them what we're doing to help with those issues. Although the property is 570 acres, the drainage basin that flows under Highway 96 is actually about 1,100 acres. That valley, everything flows to that point. So in our preliminary model on stormwater, we've modeled that entire 1,100 acres, not just what is on our site, but everything that flows through our site and passes through. So it's a big model. You know, we've done a lot of, a lot of work on this. So we know there's flooding and significant rain events. We know it's hard for water to have a place to go during significant storms. And the one thing I want to reiterate that Bill just mentioned is that the ground today is hard-packed. It has tall grasses on it at certain times of the year, but it's hard-packed ground. And there's no storage for that water when it, when it comes on the site. When it rains in a large storm event, water hits the ground and within 24, 25 hours, we calculated, it leaves the Burgess property and is on to, under Highway 96 and to Royal Glen, into that area in about 24 hours of time, because there's no place to store that water on the site. So what we've done is we've, we've started from there and we said, well, let's solve the drainage problem first, and then let's turn our eyes to the site plan and lots. Usually it's the other way around. We get a developer that says, I want this many lots. And that gives me a place in the corner for a pond, you know? But we worked backwards on this. We said, we've got to figure out the drainage first. We've come up with 32 acres of area for ponds. Those ponds range in depth. And then once we had that figured out, then we went to the drawing board on the site and how we can figure the lots on the site. So what we've done, if you could go to the next slide, please. On this site plan, as Doug mentioned, as Bill mentioned, excuse me, we've kind of got a spine here down the existing channel that runs through the site. And on either side of this spine, we have the wetland areas that Bill mentioned, and then we have our detention ponds. So we've kind of designed a central green corridor, if you will, through the heart of the site. So we've created 32 acres of storage area where there's really none today for that stormwater to, to hold, you know, to stay in while that storm is, is trying to pass through. What the results of that are, and if you'll go to the next slide, Mike? I'll just stay here so I can see what I'm looking at. What you'll see on this slide is, in our conceptual model, are the existing versus proposed flows for stormwater leaving the site. So the blue bars represent the existing flow in cubic feet per second for the two through 100-year storms. And then the yellow bar represents the proposed flow, peak flow that would leave the site. And this is analyzed at that point where the drainage exits the site under Highway 96. The county requirement is that we detain the 50-year storm event to its existing condition. So whatever the flow is that leaves the site under the 50-year storm, we can allow that much, but no more to leave the site after we develop. And so what we've done here is, is you can see this column right here is the 50-year storm. The blue bar again is existing, that's what leaves today. The yellow is what we are proposing to allow to leave the site. So we've, we've really gone above and beyond in the amount that we're detaining stormwater on our site. After that, we said, because of the drainage problems in the surrounding neighborhoods, we feel like we need to go a step further. Neighbors in this area have seen what 100-year storm event and larger look like, and we needed to think about that. We needed to take that into consideration. So we went ahead and designed at a conceptual level, our stormwater system to detain the 100-year flow as well. So you'll see the blue bar represents the existing flow in 100-year storm. The yellow bar represents what we are proposing to allow to release from the site in 100-year event. So we're going that extra measure, looking at the 100-year storm as well. Also point out that, you know, before I mentioned that in a significant rain event, water rains in this basin and in 24 to 25 hours, it is, it has left the site and it is on to Royal Glen. This model would stretch that time out to about 60 hours. So what that does is it holds that stormwater back for more than twice as long as it currently takes to leave the site, allows it, that water to slowly leave and meter out. And that should help the issues in the surrounding area. Again, we can't fix everything offsite, you know, for everyone, but in our meetings with neighbors, we feel like they've really come to an understanding of what, what this plan does and how it's going to help. And we've, we've been glad to meet with people, listen to their concerns, had several more phone calls today, just kind of hearing what's going on in the area. And we feel like the people we've talked to have really been receptive to what we're proposing versus what maybe could have been at the site by just meeting the minimum regulation by the county. Last thing I'll mention is most of our ponds, after we detain that stormwater, are then going to go into a wetland area first before discharging into the channel through the site. So those wetlands are going to provide additional benefit in terms of slowing water down, evapotranspiration. Chris can talk to the plant life and those, what those do for, on the environmental benefit side. But, so it's a comprehensive model. We've spent a long time working on and we're proud to be able to present it to you tonight. Thank you.
Brad is our traffic engineer for Kimley Horn. Brad, can you speak to the traffic study that you prepared, please?
Yes, can you hear me okay, Bill?
Yes, I can.
Excellent. Thank you. My name's Brad Walshman. I'm a traffic engineer with Kimley Horn, and we prepared a traffic impact study for this development. That required coordination with planning staff and with engineering staff to make sure we were understanding what needed to be analyzed. And so everyone understands the purpose of the traffic impact study is to analyze traffic from this development and determine if any improvements should be considered along Highway 96. So what you see here is there's a blue bar graph and an orange bar. The blue bar represents if this residential development was a typical single-family in-town home development that anybody, regardless of age, could, could purchase and live in. What the orange bar represents is what this development, a age-restricted active adult community generates. You'll see by restricting the age, it generates 50% less traffic over an entire day. And when you focus on the morning and afternoon rush hours, this development with the active adult 55 and over community generates about 60% less than what a typical residential that's not age-restricted might generate. So that's something that we noted when we were doing our analysis. So we want to make sure we communicate that. So we prepared our analysis and prepared our traffic study, which has been submitted to the county. And if you could please go to the next slide, some of the findings of our traffic impact study were at the two driveways for this development. There are needs for left-turn lanes and right-turn lanes along Highway 96 into each of those driveways. And so that's what's being recommended at each of our two driveways. The left-turn lanes and the right-turn lanes will benefit the motorists coming in and out of the development, as well as benefiting the motorists who are just traveling straight through Highway 96. There won't be a left turner or a right turner stopping traffic behind them. And so that's a very high-level summary of the traffic impact analysis that we prepared and have submitted to planning and engineering staff. And I'll be happy to answer any questions if needed. And Bill, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Brad. There's one last slide I was going to put on here. It's kind of towards the end. Wasn't sure if I was going to present it, but Travis mentioned, our engineer mentioned a second ago, that we met with the neighbors several times and we, we have. The first meeting that we had, neighborhood meeting, was a Zoom call, which quite frankly, I'm not really still accustomed to how this really works. But that Zoom call, we had a neighborhood meeting. But after that, I really didn't feel like we had a chance to connect with the community and get from them really a lot of good questions and answers. Sometimes you don't really know a lot about a project until you actually can talk to everybody in the area and really get an understanding of what they're, they're trying to communicate. So, thanks Doug, that's the one I was looking for. So some of the things that came back in comments, now, we weren't, we're probably not going to be able to accommodate every question that was asked of us. I'll be the first person to say that. As an example, we don't, we're not proposing that we're solving the drainage issue. But some of the things that we, we are trying to accommodate on some of the concerns that came back to us. Along Highway 96, we talked about putting in a screening of evergreens right off of the highway to make sure that we had kind of a, a really nice buffer that would kind of screen like Royal Glen has out there now. So we're adding that into our level of commitments. The other thing we talked about, and we've, we've already discussed this quite a bit, is the drainage that comes off of our project and then flows into Royal Glen. The third thing that we would like to do is, there's a lady that lives in a house right about there, and she has asked us, I'll be more specific, she likes to ride her horses and she has a tendency to, to come to a spot right here in the back location of her property and she prays. And so she was concerned about what the look would be from our neighborhood into her fields. And so first of all, where we have an impact, where we're close to anybody's residence, we've got a 35-foot buffer between us and the property line. When I say a buffer, because these are going to be one-story living, we still will have quite a bit of grading that we'll have to do to try to make these lots level for, and so we don't have a lot of steps into the house. But when we're talking about a buffer, we're talking about the back of the lots being 35 feet off of the property line. In addition to that, for the lady that lives in this house, we're going to be planting some evergreens that will act as an additional screen, same kind of concept that we have off of 96. We'll be putting that here where we get closer to her property. Her house is up here, but we still, where she rides her horses and she, she wants that private, that space and that time, we're planting it in that area as well. And in the back of the property, where she also uses this pond back here, we're also going to be planting some evergreens and making sure that we've got an ample buffer between the back of our lots and that property line. There's one thing that's not showing on here. We've met with another lady, it's in the back corner. Doug, would you mind going to our master plan, this is kind of early in the presentation? Wouldn't hurt to just show that. A really nice lady lives, Carolyn lives in this house right here, her and her husband. And she was concerned because there has been a situation where we had the 2010 floods and even probably some as recent, between 2010 and now. And what was happening is there's a small drain that runs off of our property that, that makes its way onto her property. What we're doing is we're actually going to be grading these lots down and we're going to be redirecting the water back into our subdivision. We've met with her numerous times and even as last, as of last week, and have worked out to make sure she's a clear understanding of what we're proposing. Again, not trying to address, not able to address every comment, but those were some of the majority of the ones that we, we'd been asked to take and consider and look at. I'm going to, I guess, we're done with our presentation. If you guys have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer anything you guys might have for us.
I have a question about your Section 9, which is in the southwest corner. The topography over there is very steep, and it's also quite steep over here on the eastern side where the little notch is below, just south of the power lines there. Particularly in this Section 9 in the southwest corner, that's very high-density, tight, narrow lots. If you go to that southwest corner there in the lower left...
Sorry, you talking about here?
Right there. Yeah, those are very small lots and it's very steep topography. How are you going to address drainage issue and street slopage and that sort of... Obviously, this is not a final site plan, but I just want to make sure that you guys are thinking about that in advance before you get boxed into a corner there.
Jim, I appreciate the question. I'm going to, Travis, would you mind standing up here? I might be able to address it, Jim, but if I don't address it well enough, then I'm going to turn it over to Travis to explain. When we started into the design of this project, again, drainage being the key issue that we had to contend with, the drainage, of course, being the point where it drains into under 96 and into Royal Glen. When we designed the project, we actually did a grading plan that graded out all the lots and graded out all the roads. That's going to shift because it was a preliminary design, but it's still a lot more work than you typically would. It's like the, the process that engineers go through right before they actually start creating their final set of construction drawings. So all the roads and the lots are actually pre-designed. So handling the detention has been calculated for those lots. And you're right, that back corner does get a little bit steeper. With a Dell web community, they're going to want really flat, level lots, because they don't want a lot of steps going into their house. So when we designed it and engineered it, those lots were actually graded with his model. Do you want to add to that comment, Travis, or is that...
It's pretty good.
Jim, do you have any more thoughts on that?
Well, I guess I'm thinking about the slopes of the driveways. You know, are people going to pull into their driveway and drag their bumpers in the street? Or are they going to be able, you know, these are, these people are seniors. Are they going to be able to walk from their house and come, walk down the sidewalk and walk up and down the street? You know, it's going to be very tight back up in there for fire trucks and, you know, it's, it's going to be a challenging spot.
So the way it was engineered and graded, there's actually two questions, I think, that you were asking. The first question that I think I can answer is that the lots have a maximum of 2% grade from the front of the lot to the back, it's 2%. That's a very small difference in grades. These lots are going to be really flat. The second question you asked is about the road grades and how does that transition? When you have a flat lot, that's automatically going to make your roads a lot flatter as well. Do you have a percentage that you have on the roads that you can think of, or you want to...
We, we hardly have anything over 5% longitudinal slope on the roads in the neighborhood. So it's, it's pretty flat. That's about, you know, on some of these lots, you're not even talking two feet across the front of it, you know, from side to side as you walk down the street. So we're taking into account the pedestrian activity that we want to encourage within the development and made sure to keep our roads under that. So we do have a, you know, a buffer around the perimeter of that back section so we can do some grading. But our, our grading plan for the, we've already done the grading plan for the entire property at a preliminary level to make sure we can get those lots and streets within the specs that Dell Web wants to see, and we've done that.
If this was a regular market rate subdivision, then we probably would have a lot different grades in the steps and the, being able to get the car onto the driveway without dragging the car onto the street and hitting the bottom out. That would be much more likely. In this situation, we're kind of constrained by Pulte's requirement for deliverable lots with a certain percent slope on them.
Some of the concerns that we've had about development, high-density development, deals with parking in the street and being able to get emergency vehicles up and down. Who runs the HOA? How are issues like that going to be addressed?
Good question. That was actually a compound question. I'm going to have to break that one into pieces between you and Jim, making it hard on me. So first of all, when the engineer designed the road network, they always design it with the, with the, what they will submit to Mike Hughes, the county engineer, they'll design it with a template on emergency vehicles being able to make turnarounds and corners and, and make sure they have visibility and all that. So I think that's going to be addressed once we get into the detail. Mike, Travis, do you have anything that you'd like to add to that comment?
While he's coming up, if I could just interject something. It looks like, I'm looking in the pattern book, Bill...
in the pattern book, Billy, you might want to mention too, like Chairman Phillips was saying about the cars parking in the road, it looks like your driveways are going to be set back, the houses are going to be set back far enough where you're going to be able to accommodate several cars in the driveway as well.
Okay. Well, I thought you were going to talk about the fire. Okay, I'll handle the part with Doug, and I'll, we're tag teaming here. So, the question that you had about the setbacks of the houses, so, because we're dealing with an onsite wastewater treatment plant, Consolidated Utility District have, they have in their guidelines, certain requirements that include how you have a step box, what the buffers around the step box are, how that relates to other utilities, water, sewer, electric, gas, and all of them having their own distance and separation from each other. What that did to our plan is it pushed, it made our lots 150-foot deep, typically 150-foot deep. Not all of them are that way, but that's the typical. And in that 150-foot distance, we end up having to push the houses back about 50 feet off of the right away. So, that 50-foot space is the standard, that's the typical. Now, we did put in our design guidelines that we could go down as low as 35-foot setback, but that's going to be probably for the larger, more, the state houses. But all those 35-foot or 50-foot setback is really driven by the utility districts and the buffers that they require around it. What that automatically does is it creates that deeper driveway. The driveways are all prescribed to be 18 feet wide, and they'll be a minimum of 35 feet, but more likely, most of them will be closer to 50-foot, depending on the product that, the Dell Web product that they would put on there. So, with a 35-foot driveway, you should still be able to get four cars in the driveway. 50-foot makes it really easy to get four cars in the driveway, and you still have two cars that can be parked in the garage. So, that's for a normal, typical market rate subdivision. In this situation, we still have a community that are mostly retirees, where they're not necessarily, they're empty nesters. They're not going to likely have children and multiple cars because of the type of community. So, not only do we have ample parking for if it was a regular subdivision, but we even have a lot less because it's also a retirement community.
And I'll just speak to the fire circulation issue. We've already taken a look at that and making sure that fire truck templates work throughout the community on all the intersections, all the turns. There are, as you'll see on the land plan, a few dead ends, kind of stub outs at the edges of the property. And so, we've either designed a cul-de-sac that meets the required minimum radius, or we've done a stub out that's no longer than 150 feet, so that the fire truck, if it needs to come to that last lot, it doesn't have more than 150 feet to back up and make that turnaround, which meets the fire marshal requirement.
One last thing to add to that. If you look in the pattern book, you'll notice that there are also three different types of road sections, and two of those road sections are considered to be collector boulevards and a collector street. They have a little bit of a different road typical section. So, it was in the intent, as we looked at circulation for EMS or for fire, that as you come into the neighborhood, you'd have really a spine road that would be able to access. Now, the main portion from this roundabout back to the entrance, you'll notice that there's no lots that are facing into that roadway. Even these lots are actually backing up, but they don't have any frontage on this road all the way to the roundabout. And that's intentional. That's to keep, in the event that there is an emergency, you'd have plenty of runway for the emergency vehicles to make their way through the community.
Mr. Chairman, another question.
Yes, Commissioner Allen.
Thank you. Actually, I have two questions. My first one is, what's the advantage keeping the road network private as opposed to turning it over to the county?
Now, that's a really good question. There's a couple of different thoughts in that. When we go to a private road, one of the benefits that we have as the developer is, going back to, again, with the utility district. So, CUD has a very specific buffer requirement that they have around their utilities. Well, the Rutherford County Road Commissioner also has a very specific requirement on how he likes to see his public roads and how not to have certain utilities in them. So, with us turning them private, one, again, this could be a longer conversation, but the one that comes to my mind as being the bigger reason is that with us going to private streets, we can work with the utility district, and we can now put water and/or sewer, actually, it's just water, sorry, Jason, back and back. He was looking at me with those beady eyes, the pressure was intense. But it was just water. Water would be allowed, then, to go inside the roadway. The Rutherford County Road Commissioner, he does not like to have water inside his roads. So, with us being able to move a utility, a main utility line, actually inside the roadway, it allows us a little bit more flexibility on where the other buffers are for the other utilities. There are other reasons, but that was the primary one.
And then, my next question is really just more of a practical one. How do you go about controlling or managing the age restriction? Because I'm thinking about, you know, we've got all kinds of untraditional, non-traditional blended families, where you've got grandparents raising grandchildren, you've got adult children needing to come home and help care for aging parents. So, I saw in your pattern book, you said that there are limitations, you know, to that age restriction, but how is that managed? I just wondered from a practicality standpoint, how does that work?
It's very challenging. So, Dell Web communities, they do this around the country, and they have a very specific model that they used in their CCNRs to restrict and control that. Will Coles, are you still on the call? Will Coles being the divisional president for Dell Web here in Nashville?
Yes.
Will, would you like to answer that question, please?
Yes, and Bill's right that we have documents that restrict the various rules about how long children of a certain age can be present in the community. They're definitely not allowed to live in the community full-time. We also have an HOA company that will manage the community with a person that'll be onsite every day. So, there's a lot of policing between neighbors and the HOA employees that are onsite. And we also have to do reporting annually on the makeup of people that are buying to make sure that we comply with the restriction. So, it's definitely watched closely by a lot of people, and it's very restrictive. And we do have situations, they come up sometimes where we have to deal with that and, you know, find different living arrangements for a grandchild or something.
Because that's kind of what I was thinking, I just wasn't sure how you would handle that from the standpoint of, I know from, you know, if you've got a child living in a neighborhood, and then those are private roads, trying to think about, well, what does a school bus do if that child, you know, is needing to ride the bus to go to school? Those are the kinds of practical things I'm trying to figure out, sort of the down the road, how does that, how do those pieces work?
Yeah, for sure. And us, you know, I'm not sure about the specifics of the school bus routing and things like that, but if there was a school bus coming to pick up children, that's not allowed. The children just aren't allowed to live there. And that's a deed restriction on your property, so there's no, you can't allow the child to live.
Okay. So, if a family situation, if their circumstances change, then they would just need to move out of the community? So, that's it? Okay. Great. All right, thank you.
While he's on that, do those expire at any time, or those stay in place forever and ever? Amen.
So, Will, if you could stay on the call for a second. His, Planning Commissioner Lee has asked if the CCNRs that are recorded for the Dell Web community, if they stay in place forever?
Yes, they stay in place forever, and it's actually a recorded deed restriction against the property.
Chairman Phillips, may I add something? Going back to the roads, even though they're going to be private streets maintained by the HOA, they will be designed and inspected by the Rutherford County Planning and Engineering Department. So, they'll have to follow our county regulations, vertical, horizontal, slopes, everything, and we will have inspectors onsite during construction to make sure they meet our standards. But perpetual maintenance will belong to the HOA.
Thank you. A couple of thoughts. Mike, is the, is the culvert under 96, is that the only outlet for this drainage basin?
There, that's the main, and it's multiple culverts. I forget how many, it's like five, four, four large culverts. And what Travis was telling us, that they're...
Hold more water onsite now, so...
If this was out west, you'd start a range war because you're holding too much water back. But they, I think they're reducing it to like 27%, 28% of what was leaving the site before. So, but there is a smaller stream that kind of flows through this area on the backside, on the west side, that goes through McNeil Farms, kind of snakes through there. But the majority of the site will flow out under 96 on this side. They, let me go back a couple slides.
So, in a nutshell, that, those four larger culverts under 96 will likely see less velocity because they're holding more water onsite. Even some of it will be the neighbor's water, because you're, you've got multiple drainage basins flowing really into the Burgess property.
Right. You've got essentially...
So, downstream, those neighbors are going to get some relief, too?
Yes, that's, that's our goal, to help out in any way possible. As, like I said, we can't solve the problem, but we can not make it any worse and improve it if we can.
Yeah, you can at least attempt to improve. Okay. I have, part of my county district is in the city, and I have two 55 and up communities in my district, and they don't allow any parking on the street. And, but what they do for visitors, for family on the weekends, for parties, they have pods spread out off the roads for like seven or eight parking slots that are supposed to be for visitors only. You, if I'm an owner, I can't park my boat out there. But you may have these already incorporated in the master plan, I just haven't got to that page yet. But if not, that might be a thought to, to make sure you keep folks off the street.
Mike, if you don't mind, can I take a stab at answering that? It's going to take me a second to flip to my book and page number here. I'm looking for the amenity center, the parking.
It's toward the back.
Okay. Thank you.
Bear with us.
Doug, would you mind going to any one of the slides that may show the amenity center, please? Doesn't have to be specific, or Mike. There's, I think there's two ways of answering that, Mike. One is not going to answer your question entirely, but let me start with that. So, what we'd mentioned earlier is that the prescription that we have from the utility district, and the way we're setting this up, these houses are going to be pushed quite a ways back off the road, which will be much deeper driveways. Typically, you're not going to fill those up because they're retirees. It's very common that you're going to have one or two people living in the house. You're not going to usually have a large family in there because of the restricted living. The second comment I was going to make to that is regards to the amenity center. Travis, I'm going to need your help again, buddy. We have in one of our books, it talks about how many parking spaces that we...
I don't think it's...
Thirty-seven. I'm going to let...
Our page numbers are cut off.
Yeah. So, I am so sorry for this, guys, but there is a large percentage of parking spaces that we are going to be programming for the amenity center, and I, for the life of me, with this crazy pattern book that I'm flipping through, cannot find that number.
We'll get it on the screen.
I think she's, you said, Charlie, you said 37?
That's the cars in the...
Oh, like the driveway, it's like 45.
That's the cars in the driveways, not the exit that she showed.
Yeah, what I'm looking for is where we actually talk about how many parking spaces we've reserved for the amenity center. Rob, can you bring me the book, please?
I don't think they have a count on there.
Well...
Let me ask this question.
Yes, sir.
It sounds like you have plenty of parking at the amenity center, okay?
We have a lot of parking that'll be programmed for the amenity center, and primarily because this is going to be such a heavily programmed amenity center with indoor pool and all those kind of things that go with it. If you look at the different amenity centers that they already have in Nashville, Providence, and also Southern Springs and Spring Hill, it's a large parking area that they have programmed.
I just, I guess I'm asking you to look at the potential to have some little parking, some guest parking hubs off some of the main roadways, six spots maximum maybe, but that will, that will tremendously help keep cars off the main road, parking, even if it's just the weekend family coming to visit. In the 55 and up communities that I'm familiar with, man, I'm telling you, you park in the street, the little blue-haired lady out there is, is, she's, she's telling you, you can't do that. And so, these people have to search out these little pods and park in the pods. And so, any little stretch of green space, you know, throw in four or five parking places for guest parking only. And that, that would really help keep things off the street.
Mike, well, we'll take a look at that. One of the other things, Mike, that we were asked about was the, how we handle the mailbox situation, and so, we are working with the postmaster. That may also require us a couple of pocketed areas. We've been trying to figure out how not to, the post office requires us to do this one central location within the neighborhood, and we prefer, to your point, spread them out to some of the pocket parks, and then when we do that, we leave places for people to pull in and get their mail and pull back out again. We have not been able to wrap that part up with the postmaster, but we have been working on it for a few months now.
Postmaster had a heart. I would think he would understand that the 55 community and up, which I'm certainly one of, would appreciate not having to take my bicycle three miles to your amenity center to get my mail.
Mike will be asking for your endorsement with the post.
I'll be happy to volunteer for that.
Will Dell Web take care of all of the maintenance and everything, or will there be a homeowners association or anything of that type?
Yes, there's going to be a very elaborate homeowners association, and that is also very common and one of the staples of a successful Dell Web community. So, when we, as we get further into this, we're going to go through and we're going to create the covenants and restrictions for the neighborhood, which will then be what establishes the HOA. But all those prescriptions of things that you guys have asked about tonight regarding how we control the 55 years and older, how we handle parking on streets, all those things that will be, and even how the wetlands and the private streets and all that kind of stuff, everything will be prescribed in detail in that document. And that, it's not new. That actually is something that is fairly common amongst the Dell Web communities.
Mike, do we have this situation anywhere else where the private road meets your county specifications?
Not this large of a development. There are a few older private street developments in the county, but nothing this scale. So, if there's, if there's a maintenance issue, it's, it's the HOA that has to hire a contractor to come out and repair a failure, a street failure or whatnot.
Okay. Okay. If everybody, if everybody under... Okay. Okay. If everybody, if everybody understands it's HOA and a private, and it is a private road, but how many times is that going to, it can be dialing your phone because you're the engineer for the road?
I'll send them straight to Bill. I'll say, no, here's Bill's cell phone. You call him directly.
And you know what? He would do that, too.
Yes.
Craig, this is a, when we set up the private streets, this is going to be a very common thing. A lot of Del Webbs around the country are actually gated communities. This one is not, even though we have it set up like it would be a gated community, that's not the intent. We found that retirees have a tendency to want that security. They want to know that they don't have people driving through the community and not sure if they live there or if they're in their, you know, casing houses or whatever. So, but in this situation, we're going to be very specific to try to control access points to make sure that we do create that sense of security. Even though this is not a gated community, the private streets and the concept is, again, wildly used amongst the Del Webb communities around the country. So it's not a, to, to Mr. Hughes' point, designing and building it, following all the regulations that you guys have on this project is certainly the intent. And then once we finish that, we just, we manage it like we do, nothing different. Like right now, your county ordinance requires the sidewalks, if a developer has a sidewalk, it's supposed to be maintained by the HOA. Am I right thinking that, Mike? It's no different than that. So we're going to be handling the sidewalks, but we'll also be handling the curb and gutter and the, and the roads and the drainage. Sorry.
Potholes.
And the potholes, I'm going to have Mike Hughes' cell phone number and his personal home address, and I'll be referring back to him.
The call block on.
While we're talking about the roadway network, could you clarify for me if those on the south and southwest and west are stub roads for future-
Thanks for, that's a good question. So what we are trying to, and Travis, I might need you to refresh my memory, but it's intent, oh, thank you. So, right, Mikey, I'm just going to hand you the clip here. So where we have asterisks, those would be future connectivity points. So we do have one that would be a connection here. This piece of property is actually landlocked. It, the access in and out of that piece of property is through an easement that we're going to make sure that we accommodate as part of this project. That's why we have these connection points here. But we'll have a connection point there and there. Those are the three primary ones.
And then I noticed the one between the two asterisks at the south part, right where it says Stormwater Mount on the other side, the right, to the right of that one you just pointed out, right there?
Yes, sir.
Southwest corner on that part that's got steep grade, you've got one there, and then you've got three south of there. So I'm just curious if they were proposed future as well, or?
They're not. Once we got into the land plan, it was intentioned, intentionally that we would end up trying to minimize it. Again, it's for safety issues. If this was a market rate subdivision, it would be a different conversation. But really, they want to try to limit people coming in from other sources of the neighborhood or casing somebody's house and then scooting off into another neighborhood. They really try to be careful about that.
You mentioned the landlock part of that. That southwest corner came to mind as well as, as that would be a natural access for future development there. So, I mean, this is, this is really large. I think Doug said it's one of the largest ones he's dealt with. So I, I just couldn't imagine adding on to this with another two, three, four hundred homes and all access through that network. This is pretty, pretty large self-contained development.
I kind of feel it's kind of small to me, but just kidding. The one other thing is we were asked possibly turning this into an access point, and that's still a conversation that will be held later with, with, with everyone.
We did work with Bill and Travis about adding internal connectivity as well, adding additional cross connections, so we're not isolating a particular area. This area in the southwest corner originally just had one, one connection, I believe. And we asked them to add another connection for safety purposes, for circulation. So, and they have, they've accompanied that.
Question. Sorry, Chairman. I, I'm looking at the pattern book and my, my pad is a little slow and changing pages. But I see about the exterior materials, and I see the word siding, but that doesn't tell me whether that's vinyl siding or hardy board. Please tell me you're not using any vinyl.
Thanks for addressing it to him. That's nice that I don't get that question. Will Coles, are you on the call? Will Coles, again, is the divisional president for Polty Homes Del Webb.
Yes, we will not be using vinyl. We use fiber cemented siding.
So he said cement board is what he would be using. I say that just to clarify, Will, the eaves and overhangs probably would be, but not the actual exterior cladding.
Yes, that's right.
Are there any easy questions that anybody wants to ask?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff.
Commissioner Allen.
Along with Mike's concerns about visitor parking, I'm concerned about that as well. When you've got over 1,100 lots in nine phases, and all your visitor parking is at the front of the neighborhood, do you have any concerns that we should perhaps require some additional parking in these, in each individual phase? Because I know they're going to be committed to the pattern book, and so that's my concern. Instead of just putting it on their radar for future, you know, consideration, I'm wondering if we don't need to make it a requirement as part of the pattern book?
Well, I think based on the conversations that I've heard here tonight, I mean, there's a couple of things playing into this. First of all, the amount of parking in each driveway is, in my mind at least, is fairly significant. They can at least get, it looks like, based on the, what they've shown, four cars in there, based on the comment about putting little pods here and there, and their discussion as far as the mail kiosks, maybe in the parket, pocket parts, excuse me, areas around, those are opportunities where we could have those kind of extra parking areas. I think parking will be, I, I think that'll be main, will be provided for, especially when, when I looked at those diagrams in there that had the, that showed the number of cars that could fit in the driveway. So, but I, I do think, I mean, if that's something that you're concerned with, I mean, I think that's something that the applicants have heard, and it could probably work into the development, especially with those small pocket parks located in each individual phase, if you will.
Yeah, I, I do think it would be worthwhile to have that additional visitor parking. Primarily, I'm thinking about, you know, small groups on Sunday night. And, you know, we've got a very active senior community here in Smurra. So I know what a social bunch these people are. And so I'm just concerned that they're not going to want to walk from the amenity center to the, you know, all the way to the back of the neighborhood to go see their friends. So I'm just concerned that we, we need to make sure we've got some additional parking for those types of moments. And especially when you've got this size of a neighborhood, you're going to have some social butterflies living in this neighborhood who are going to want to have people over. So I just think we need, it's smart now to plan for that on the front end.
Thank you, Rhonda. Any other questions for the developer?
I think I heard it mentioned earlier, but what were the price range?
Will Coles, would you mind coming on, please, and speaking to that?
Yes, the homes will range from 400,000 to 650,000.
I'm sorry, Will, did you say 450,000 to 650,000?
400 to 650,000, yes.
400 to 650,000, going once? Going, okay.
I thought that was the figure that I had heard earlier, but I don't know if you're going to have all that many cars. I'm just thinking about the price ranges of these, these homes and the people that are going to be there.
Will, can you speak to what your experience has been in Southern Springs? Because that's a almost, what, two-thirds built-out community?
Yeah, it's almost two-thirds built out, and it's, it'll be about 800 homes at build-out. And, you know, there's really surprisingly few cars in the neighborhood. A lot of people do have golf carts that, and we actually sell golf cart garages, and our houses are designed to accommodate that. So people will golf cart around. And they're extremely special, so you're right about that. And there's a lot of gathering. But it's usually from people within the neighborhood. A lot of people are moving from somewhere else to come to this community. So it's, it's very internal is where most of the entertainment goes on. So there's, we've, we have no problems with on, on-street parking in Southern Springs. And it's the same situation where really our only common parking lot is at the amenity center. And, and it's even mostly empty. People walk or bike or golf cart to the amenity center as well. So it's, you know, it's really way less cars than-
Jill, one thing, because the question came up about additional parking. Mike and Pettis both made the comment as well. What we would propose is to figure out what the postmaster is going to require of us. We just had this thing come up here in the last, I don't know, seems like six months to a year. We had to do on another one of our communities here in Nashville, we had to put in all these kiosks. And we went back and forth with the postmaster about putting one central location versus splitting them up and putting them in pocket parks around the community. And they were actually agreeable to doing that. And once we did that, we actually created, Mike and Jill, to your, to your, your thought, we actually did add those extra parking spaces. So if we end up going down that path where we're able to break up the kiosks around the community, which is the right thing to do, that would be the intent, is to create that space for people. The other thing about, not to stay on the, the kiosk thing for a second, but one thing that we've asked the, the postmaster about as part of us working through these issues, we estimated how many total kiosks would be necessary in one central location to, for this community. And once we started looking at the number, it basically, we're building a mini post office forum. So if you've ever been to Seaside and they have that little post office box in the front of the community, imagine that multiplied by tens, hundreds, I mean, not hundreds, but it's a huge, huge facility that we'd have to create. So really, we have been pushing pretty hard to, to turn these kiosks into separate areas within the community, not just because of the convenience of the residents, which that certainly would be part of it, but also it just, it makes more sense than having a big location at the entrance of a, of a community like this.
Anything else at this time? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
We just listened to the largest development, residential development that this planning commissioner has ever heard, and also the longest presentation that this planning commission has ever heard. We're ready for our public hearing. At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item number REZ 20-023 for Ernest Burgess, and this is for an age-restricted residential community. Anyone here wishing to speak, please come forward. I believe there was one individual that signed up via Zoom, Mr. James Rust. Mr. Rust, are you with us? Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request? Seeing or hearing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I, I know that a large development of any kind would give this body and staff angst because there are a lot of i's to dot and t's to cross. This one also increased the complexity because of the neighboring storm issues and the, the drainage basins, which tend to merge in the low-lying part of the old Burgess property and then head out the, the four culverts at Highway 96. But this team, in my opinion, has done an incredible job of addressing and then manipulating the land available, including the wetlands, to be able to handle that and not only handle, but to reduce the runoff on the site. I will also tell you that in my job, from six in the morning to 5:30 at night, my day job, I, I deal with some of these names that we've heard. The Poltys, the Thomason-Hutton, the Kimbley-Horns, and now Del Webb. I mean, these are nationally known names in these industries. And if, if I had Craig Lynch money and was going to put a development together, this is the kind of team I would assemble to do my work. So I, I have full confidence in the team that is behind us here. And I think we've all seen for the last hour, from the presentation, this is probably one of the better engineering and development presentations we've seen in a lot of time in much, in much of the years I've been here. I mean, we love our local folks, but the, these cats have put on a, a really top-notch presentation. And Doug and Mike can both attest that there have been multiple conversations. The communication has been back and forth for many months now. And it is a really pretty presentation. So the stormwater has been addressed. The, we, we talked about it in the beginning, but it's worth addressing in, in a motion that it sounds like they have agreed to donate, I forget the number, two plus acres for an EMS and fire hall, which, you know, also, if I was going to buy a house there, that would be a selling point for me because when I stroke out running my golf cart around, I know that the EMS guy is just up the street, right? So to me, that's a selling point. My, my only caveat is that, that we have no street parking. That, that's my only caveat. But other than that, I would make a motion to approve. To all staff comments.
We have a motion and a second to approve REZ 20-023 for Ernest Burgess, the age-restricted residential community. Questions?
I just wanted to say the team has done an outstanding job in presenting this. I know they do this all over the country, but this is very much new to us. And I want to make sure by, I support everything that, that you said, Commissioner Kush, and I want to support this project. But I'm also cautious in the fact that I don't want, to me, this is a different type of project, and we've never tried this before, but I don't want this to set a precedent that we're going to allow this kind of density on a traditional subdivision. Because this alone on a traditional subdivision would warrant its own school, just by nature of the numbers. So with that, I support this, but this is something I'm willing to try and think outside the box, not just by nature of it being a PUD, but being something we've never done before. So I think there's a lot of positives there, and they've done an outstanding job addressing the concerns of the neighbors and the drainage being the main issue and some other things. So I will support that.
Pettis?
Mr. Chairman, I too appreciate the presentation that's made here this evening, and I will be voting for this. But one thing I do want to compliment this group is the drainage and the way that they have done it in an environmental correct manner. I'm glad to see finally a presentation and a presentation presented this way that looks at drainage more than just a pond sitting out there collecting water. For years, and I know Mike, too, has seen these ponds and, and how they, they fill up, they go down. They fill up, and they go down, and then they get to the point, sometimes they quit working and whatever. But when I see this one right here, and immediately when I went to the, the book and I began looking at the plants that were in there, and I'll tell you, my degree is in plant and soil science. And I started looking at this, and I started saying, hey, somebody is finally looking at the way to take an environmental issue- the way to take an environmental issue and put it to the, to work. This is an overgrown, almost rain garden, in a way to look at it, and it's the way I think we need to be looking at this more and more and more in what we do out here and taking care of some of this drainage here. We just can't keep sending this water on down the, on down the creek to somebody else to worry about. We have to take care of it on the property that we're dealing with it, and I think this is some way of, of a way of doing it, and I appreciate this being done. And rather than getting out here and dealing with mitigating credits and trying to do it, and I guarantee you that if they got the Corps and if they got TDEC and that bunch right there to agree to this, they did something right.
Thank you, Pettis. Anything else? Okay, once again, we have a motion and a second to approve. Call or roll, please, Gal.
Charlotte P. Chip Pinion.
Yes.
Craig Lynch. David Jones.
Yes.
Jim Everwater. Lee Bogle. Marvin Whitworth.
Yes.
Mike Kush.
Aye.
Pettis Reed.
Yes.
Rhonda Allen.
Yes.
Jeff Phillips.
Yes.
Motion carries.
That is a unanimous decision, and this recommending body will carry that recommendation to the full Rutherford County Commission on November the 12th. The hearing will be scheduled for 6:30 PM on November the 12th in this courtroom. Okay, that kinda brings us to the end of our agenda. Doug, you have anything?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. For your information, we had a special meeting called for Wednesday night, which has been canceled. And don't, don't be celebrating, because there's a real probability it will come back to us after more work is done on that plan. So expect it to come back. And anyone watching on Rutherford County TV, those that are interested, we've had a number of calls about people wanting to attend public hearings in person and kinda getting the impression that they couldn't, they had to Zoom the meetings, and let me make it perfectly clear that the public is welcome. It's an open meeting, and you can attend. We will try to enforce social distancing as well as masks for those that attend, but you are welcome to attend in person, and you will be heard. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, the 26th of this month. That'll be a 9:00 AM meeting in this courtroom. Once again, thank you for your patience, your time, your attendance, and I'd also like to thank the applicant for doing such a good job. It appears that you've made our job a lot easier, and you've also made the staff's job a lot easier, and that's the type of situation that we like to see. Lee, do you have anything?
The notes on our sheet said a special call meeting on the 26th. Is there anything special happening?
That was just, right, that, that meeting is the regular meeting. I was changing the wording around eliminating, 'cause that originally did say the special meeting on the 14th. I changed the date and forgot to take out "special," so, sorry.
I just wanna make sure it wasn't a public hearing in the morning.
It's not.
And accordingly.
Regular, regular meeting.
Anything else? Once again, thank you. We are adjourned.